Okay, six o'clock, I'll call the meeting of the Anfield Board of Selectmen to order. The first thing on the agenda tonight is the public hearing of the water and sewer rates. But you're expecting, Jim?
He's going by Zoom.
Oh.
Your name's there.
Okay.
And I can share my screen, which shows the rates.
Do I, we need a motion to vote to this public hearing.
I move that we go into the public hearing for water sewer rates.
A second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Jim, I'm gonna turn it over to you. He didn't have audio before. Okay, Jim?
Yes, I'm here, sorry.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to you for explanations.
Okay, yeah, where we're at was, we got a note from Lebanon and they have adopted, I think it's 7.2% increase to the wastewater treatment charge. And so, we have had that number for two or three years now, and we've always gone up eight because, you know, the 7.2 takes care of Lebanon, but it doesn't take care of us. And so, you know, our increases have gone up a little bit, although this year, we did pretty well on the budget. I think we've, we're gonna come in under budget a little bit due to a couple of factors, but thought it was prudent to go the 8%, we're not touching the sewer fix cost. And then, on the water side, we're going up 5%, and that's just basically to continue to, to keep our rates moving so that we can accomplish some of the projects that we've put on, on the, on the town meeting and have been approved and for, you know, getting infrastructure done. And it's my hope that next year, we'll have more of a comprehensive look at the rates. I hope the new town manager has the experience and ability to sort of forecast what the rates ought to be with a couple of capital projects on there. And then, I think, in talking with Elisa recently, that our sewer deficit that we've been trying to reduce is on target, so I suspect that those numbers will probably decline once they, we get back down to where we're supposed to be on that. So, yeah, if anybody has any questions.
I just have one question, Jim, and that's, do we have an idea of where we are in terms of paying down the sewer deficits?
I think, in talking to Elisa the other day, where were we, Lisa, was it like at, I think we were at like two and a quarter before this year, was it?
We're at, we're a little over, I think, 100,000, and we're supposed to be down to 98 next year. Well, actually, I forgot that. After the end of this year, we were supposed to be down to 98,000, we're a little bit above that, in the 120,000. So, we might, we might be a little bit behind schedule, but not significantly and not to the point where I would recommend necessarily increasing the sewer deficit charge. I would just wait it out, just that little bit off.
Could be just a hiccup.
Well, I think you're expected to be out of the deficit position by the end of 2023.
That was based on the original paydown and forecast data, which I think we have some large users that didn't use, but although many people working from home should have increased a little on that offset, so we're probably not as bad as we could be.
It slowed down.
Yeah, we.
In the right direction.
Yeah, we lost the laundromat, that was a big user, and that may be that, that amount. But we expect the car wash coming on soon and possibly another one in the near future, and a couple more housing units that I think are being proposed, so those, those will add to it.
Any questions?
No. So, just for the record, can we get a sense of what the charges are recommended?
You mean, the 8% that Jim has just?
The recommended, these are the, are the 8% increase?
On the sewer side and five on the water, but that's only on the usage numbers, not the, not on the fixed costs things. We had increased the fixed costs last year on both, and it, it did the job this year, and so I think we'll leave those alone and, and then just work on, just, just the charges on the, on the, the per unit, or, you know, what people consume.
Jim, where do we stand with the replacement of the water pipes that we voted in a town meeting?
They've been doing the, working on the base map, they had surveyors in, on Maple Street. Let's see, that was about three weeks ago, I think. A little behind schedule, you know, all of my engineers seem to be losing people and, and, you know, seem to be behind the eight ball a little bit, so I expect that they're, now that they have the surveying done, that it'll be more office work and they get a lot of that done in the wintertime, so I'm hoping that we're on target, but my guess is we'll probably be constructing maybe next fall or possibly the spring of 2023.
Oh, good. Okay, if there are no further questions on water and sewer? I'd like to move to the.
I move that we come out of non-public.
We still have the donations.
Do we need to do a second? We need to go out of.
The public hearing. Right. You will, we come out of the public hearing.
Well, that's listed on your public hearing.
Yeah, no, just to be clear, so any, you could ask if there's any public comment, further public comment on the water and sewer charges.
Are there any further, have I done that?
We'll try to get.
Okay, are there any further comments on the water and sewer rates?
And then, seeing that, you could move into the next public meeting item.
Next public meeting item is the donations to the Mascomma Lakeside Park Trust Fund. $200 donation from Shirley and Glenn Green and the Mascomma Bank Foundation for $20,000.
Will these go towards our match, I think?
Yes, they're going toward the match for the land and water conservation grant that we received. And we're a little more than halfway there, we have a couple of years to do that match. We have several grants out there waiting to hear on, so let's hope. So, do I have a motion to approve these donations?
You can't do that yet, you have to do comments, then close, then the motion.
Comments? Seeing no further comments?
I move that we come out of the public hearing.
A second.
We didn't approve the donation.
No, you have to do it after you're out.
Okay, sorry, I never will get that.
That's okay, it's all in favor, so we're, yes, we're out of.
Okay.
Public hearing, okay.
What was the public hearing?
I'll make, I'll make a motion, acting as water and sewer commissioners, that the selectmen approve the proposed table of water and sewer rates.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye. I will make a motion that the select board accept the donations in excess of $10,000 for Mascomma Lakeside Park improvements, as listed in the things.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for November 20th, non-public and sealed, and December 6th, 2021.
I will make a motion to approve the slate as printed.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. I just want to make a note that the November 20th minutes that were sealed for 30 days would be unsealed as of today, so they are fully public.
Board reports.
Budget Committee, Ms. Last Thursday, I guess it must have been, it was a pretty long meeting, reasonably peaceful, there was a little bit disagreement over some issues, particularly as it related to salaries. And I think that was really the only area of contention. And we ended up approving the raise for the assistant town manager. We ended up approving the hourly raises for a number of positions in BPW. And after much back and forth as to whether to go with a cost of living slash merit raise of 2, 3, or 4%, finally settled upon 3. Jack, like that anything?
I, I, I certainly have a sense from all of the employees that were in the room that they would have rather appreciated that the discussions with respect to COLA take place in a public meeting, and I get that, I think that, I think that in spite of their best efforts, that was probably a conversation that should have happened in public, because I don't think there's any reason to do it non-public. But I do appreciate this, and certainly, I think they're expressing to try to balance the difference between individual races and kind of global ones, but I don't, I don't, I don't think they quite hit it much. And I certainly know that there are a number of employees who would like to, I'll say, reconsider that discussion and actually hear about it. And so, I was hoping that at some point, maybe I could start today and continue on through the budget, needing a gap to actually hear from many employees that were present at the time that didn't get a chance to be part of the discussion.
I got a large amount of feedback on this, and it very much mirrors what Jack said. I think there was a definite sense that people were very uncomfortable with the lack of transparency. And anytime we go into non-public and you don't really have a specific reason to be in that public, I think the reason was kind of borderline for being in that public. I know you're talking about a specific position in some cases, maybe that's right, but still, everybody can see the outcome at the end of the day. And so, unless you're talking about employee performance, which the budget committee should not be doing, I feel pretty strongly it should be done in public, because otherwise, it looks like, even if you're not hiding anything, it just looks bad, the optics are bad, and people are nervous, obviously. And I think we need to be really transparent with our employees, so that, in addition to the fact that maybe we aren't going to keep up with the cost of living for many of them, they don't also feel like we're pulling something shady. I know, 3% is, is nice, I know it's more than the place they're getting, but frankly, there are other places that are giving the cost of living rate, because when you give 3%, you're effectively giving a pay cut. I know it doesn't feel like that as a consumer, maybe a taxpayer, but you know, if you pay some 6, 8% more for hamburger and it all balances out to 4%, when you get a 3% raise, you're giving a little bit. And this year, they pay a little bit more of their health insurance, remember, because we renegotiated that. So, they're also doing a little bit of a give back on the health insurance, so they're losing economically based on the market and on the health insurance side.
And I think I propose that lead in, that you do have some information in front of you that begins to kind of address the differences with the significance between a 3 and a 4 and 5%. And I can let Elisa kind of dive into the weeds on it a little bit, but you can see that going from a 2%, for example, COLA to 3%, that's $10,815 to the budget, to gross wages. Obviously, factor in other relative percentages for payroll taxes. And one of the questions was the impact on taxes to be raised for, say, the 4 or the 5%. So, the total change of a 3% was like $13,000 for the general fund wage position that that's affected. So, in other words, it's not all town employees, if you've got water and wastewater employees and fire and so forth that aren't affected, wouldn't be affected by this, because water and sewer users. Go up to 4% and you've got $15,000, which is, you can see, .03 cents on a, basically a $6 fee on a $200,000 house. And if you went to 5%, then you have a $10 charge for a $200,000 piece of property. So, the relative impact, again, this is just a decision that we, the Board of Selectmen, that's the budget committee, you need to make. But as the old saying goes, as to the people who were affected by the COLA, we're not talking a lot of money. I understand there's the principle of that percentage and the weight that that carries, at least based on the discussion of the budget committee. Clearly, it, it seems to be deserving of more discussion, if that's possible.
And that, that, like, so if you were to take a $350,000 home, to just go on the high side of averages, because we know values have gone up, that's $10.50 on your tax bill?
Yes.
I mean, I know it's a projection, obviously, we can't, I mean, for 10 bucks, I mean, just me personally, I'll leave my.
It would have been nice to have these figures at the time.
Yeah.
Also, I would say that, you know, my sense, and I said at the meeting, I, my sense of that group was there was no way they were going to go to 4%.
They're so, they're very married to the 3% all the time.
And there were some who were really, really pushing hard for 2%. I was pretty happy we ended with 3.
Well, how do we compare with similar towns of like size and profile?
Well, I know that Lebanon is giving 3% just for cost of living.
Lebanon is a little city.
But we're still competing with that.
But we're competing with them, it's the same group of employees, you know, fun sharing. Plus, they have their merit on top of that, ours is inclusive of merit, so it's really less than that.
I know this isn't the usual time for the public comments, but I think it's relative, and that's why I came, actually, anyways. I think that, I spoke with the other, the full-time department heads, and I think that we're also, would have liked the opportunity, I think we could have added a lot to that conversation on what all the other, you know, the other local towns and areas are doing, and maybe would have, that's why we'd have liked it out in the public, so that we could have had that, added that input to the budget committee that would have been relative to the conversation of why we strongly, if we strongly supported 4% instead of 3%. You know, and I know, in talking with Jim and talking with Elisa, I'm gonna, personally, I'm gonna send an email to the budget committee, the chair, and ask for some time at the next meeting to ask them to bring the subject back up in a public session, so that we can add that to the conversation. So, I feel like that's valuable information to make a informed decision on what the.
Yeah, I think it would be important to have another voice there. And my voice was there pretty vehemently about the need to keep employees, and it's very expensive for us to lose employees with retraining and everything else.
It costs me $70,000.
But, you know, one voice is not enough, and I agree, a public hearing, public meeting would be ideal. Whether we can do that, because the budget committee is an independent entity. Try.
I'm gonna request it on behalf of the, the full-time.
I certainly start that, I'm sure the whole board here would.
Absolutely, I think for me, the cost of turnover and the time lost when you retrain somebody for over something like 1%, I like, right now, we already know we aren't competitive, but we've lost, repeatedly lost people we've just partially trained to other places who are nearby, and they're our primary competitors, even if they're not the same size town. And I'm really nervous that we're losing, we're wasting people power in town on training for something that's like a few bucks, you know, here and there. I mean, I know it's overall, $15,000 is a lot of money, but when you divide it out, it's not. We could scrape that out of, so I'd rather scrape it somewhere out of the budget elsewhere than people, I guess, because we are a service organization and we run on people, and that will never change.
We could, of course, as the Board of Selectmen, put forth our own budget. And we did that about 10 years ago, I think. I think that was about Rose.
I'd like to approach the budget committee first, hopefully we all come together.
I think that's a better.
Oh, yeah, I'm not saying we should do that, but it is within our authority to be able to do that.
Okay, stay tuned, budget committee. Kate, did you have a planning board?
Oh, planning board, we had all sorts of fun, let's see, oh. All right, well, I obviously mispiled, embarrassingly, my own planning board. I made a file, I used it, oh, I know it happens. Yeah, no, so planning board, primarily, we spent most of the time working on the sign. We went through the warrant articles for town meeting, and then there was also a lengthy discussion on the RFP for Shed Street, and that's something that I want this board to look at very closely, please. So, I know it's lengthy, I think it is not a final product, right? It's a jumping off point, and I've gotten some feedback, positive and negative, from the planning board, and I think it's a really good discussion to have, so that when we issue that RFP, we are asking the right questions so that we get proposals that fit what we truly want to see, because if we send that RFP that isn't, you know, either open enough or closed on it enough in the right spots, we're not going to go in. So, I know I've already talked to a few other members of planning, and I think they're gonna provide feedback directly to Rob Taylor, and I think everybody on this board should just read either way, and with Jack or Rob as appropriate, I don't know, Jack, what your preference would be, but maybe go directly to Rob, so that he can consolidate all the feedback, or no?
Well, I certainly want, I would expect that he's gonna consolidate the feedback, but I want to be sure that around this table and in this forum, that there's enough time for the three of you, and therefore the town, to understand what it is you're intending to do.
Yeah.
Shed Street, and, and there's some details in that.
Yes.
And I obviously don't recall them all off my head, but multi-use, rail trail access, mowing out a piece of property, I want to be sure that you spend enough time on it so that it's clear what the intention is, and it's clear what the intention is, whatever, whatever you decide. You know, just kind of give it enough daylight so that everybody's going into it comfortably.
And I think I tossed out some personal, they have very much personally ideas, but just kind of big picture ideas of things that could be, and I think we need to refine it, and I think everybody has obviously different ideas. You know, some people are thinking about, like, to set small lots or instead of a bigger project, and I think, from my perspective, maybe we wanted to find what we'd like it used to be more than what the actual configuration will be, so we can see what we have back. The proposal right now, as it stands, is probably a little too, has a little bit too much of the Lebanon language, I think. And so, cutting some of that back and making it more Anfield-centric would be, because the model was the Lebanon project on, was, I'm sorry, what was that? The old greenhouse. Anyway, the old greenhouse, I don't know where it is, but, so just if you put an extra set of eyes on it, I think, making sure that we're doing something that will be innovative but a good fit, and making sure that we collectively agree on the one.
I had asked Jack about having off a piece of land for rail trail parking and access, because parking is becoming more and more difficult for people using the rail.
I think, I think that's a very, a good thing, like, we could probably put parameters of this amount to this amount, so you're not limiting it up to it, or do we carve it off ahead of time and sell it separately? I think you do it as a permanent easement and sell a lot.
You could. I guess the, at the end of the day, you don't want to limit the creativity of the responses or the new offers you might get. And, and you're right, don't, don't kind of micro-contain it at the outset, kind of open it up, and then take kind of a measured view of what the various elements that people bring to you. Next use or whatever.
And I think we need to be clear as a board, since we control at the end of the day the sale on behalf of the taxpayers, that we're not just gonna sell it for the money to the highest bidder, we're gonna sell it for something that's a good fit.
That will become an integral part of the.
Exactly, that will have good value, and so I think, and that's an important thing, because, you know, people worry about a project that is different, changing quality and architecture of their neighborhood, and I want this to improve it.
Be nice if it lines up with some of the master planning recreational interests, moderately increasing, something that's taxable. So, you know, generating something that's gonna create employment or jobs or money somehow or other, yeah, all of a sudden.
Heritage did not have a forum this month, we combined the November and December meetings into early December. It was unfortunate Suzanne Hinman is on a health leave of absence. Shirley, Mary Ann had deployed in California for a funeral, and Shirley had another engagement, so that didn't happen. We had a very successful holiday gathering at Lakeside Park, and we now have tight cast Dave Bouffay as our permanent Santa Claus. Dave arrived by boat with Sharon the elf, so it was great fun, and we look forward to improving it for next year. Okay, Jack, board reports.
I don't have any.
I mean, sorry.
Yeah. I don't, I don't have anything specific to report, except I did pass on the dates from Brett Lo.
Right.
Finally, looking at January 24th and 27th for two public information sessions in order to again get some daylight on the Whitney Hall expansion renovation slash public service concept, study conceptual work that was done by Brett Lo. So, as soon as we get the final tweaking, or send that off to the printers, mail it out to every postal patron in Anfield and Anfield Center, and, and then begin that dialogue in a public session over at the community building or network. Just to begin the dialogue, and I can imagine that they'll probably, will probably tee up a warrant article just to be ready for, after taking the outcome of those meetings, but just to be sure we've got some language that works. They always pull it if you, if the, if the feedback from the a session isn't favorable, then obviously that's wrong.
That it?
It is, yeah, I've got a couple more things up.
Okay, yeah, we're down for business, snowmobile use on town-owned property.
Yeah, so you may remember that sometime last year, there was an issue with Mr. Com, kind of, accessing the snowmobile, the snowmobile. And I went back through the minutes of the meeting, and then I reviewed the actual language of the conservation land there. And I wanted to be sure that the record was clear that the easement actually doesn't prohibit snowmobiles. There was some reference in the minutes a year ago that it did, which is why there was so much effort paid to stopping that behavior. But it is the select board that actually gets to decide as to snowmobiles in the right conditions whether they can access that property. Now, there was other stuff going on about whether trees were cut and the type of access and that sort of thing, but I just wanted to bring back to kind of get a revisit, a reconsideration on whether or not, given the easement language, that actually does allow snowmobiles with your permission, whether that altered the decision you made last year. If you were under the impression that. whether that altered the decision you made last year, if you were under the impression that somehow it prohibited that.
Well, did you, what did the Upper Valley Land Trust have to say about it? They whole way.
Your decision, yeah.
I thought I made a motion that we posted for, no, but maybe it wasn't. I I feel like we had this discussion and we made a specific endeavor to post it so that they couldn't have snowmobiles, and maybe, I think Roy, you were there for the discussion. I don't know what it actually was at the end of the day, though, because, but if we need to make it more clear, I say we prohibit the snowmobile from that property because it's not made for that purpose. It's not, the trails aren't constructed for that.
Were you, you, I believe you clearly decided that snowmobiles were not accepted.
Right, and so.
But I just wanted to be sure that the basis of that decision was legally accurate.
So my position has always been that the issue was the cutting of trees on town owned land so we could get the snowmobiles to that trail, and that's the basis of my vote last time.
I think.
Because I I have read that document, if you're absolutely right.
I mean, I, I mean, we can break this down into two parts and reaffirm it, you know, I'll make a motion that we affirm, reaffirm that the select board does not wish to allow motorized vehicles on, what do we want to call the park, the Big Mal Brook?
I think it's the, yeah.
Tractor, whatever. Okay, so that's my motion to reaffirm.
Including snowmobiles.
Yeah.
identifies motorized vehicles as well as snowmobiles as a different section.
Okay.
Whether.
No snowmobiles either. Or ATVs, yeah, no motorized vehicles.
I will second that motion. Comments? So shall we vote on it? All vote?
Aye.
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 Okay. Again, I just want to be sure the record will have the accurate basis for that decision.
And then the tree cutting pieces, timber trespass, and that has a specific, and the police department or whoever can deal with it.
That's correct.
Well, there won't be any reason to cut trees, though.
You can't cut trees on somebody else's property without permission anyway, so you don't have to vote on that.
I know, exactly.
We already have a plan in place this year with fishing game, and I'll leave it at that.
Yeah, I mean, this is a habitual problem across multiple parcels, not just ours.
While we're on the subject of so, snowmobiles, I'd like to probably thank Paul Courier and his legal helpers of the fence. I got an email from Jim Taylor. Must have been Friday, Thursday or Friday, saying that it had been vandalism at the park. Paul had gone at great lengths to put up the snow fence and and the lines with flags on them to guide people where they needed to go and not places where they shouldn't go. And it was between Wednesday and Thursday, I believe, the fence was all removed. They also.
Removed and gone?
No, just removed, taken out of the ground, stakes and laid on the ground, and they'd also roped off the new access, which to me was a sign you can fence this all, but we're not going to use this new access. Anyhow, Paul and his band of merry men went over very early Saturday morning before the snow and put it all back up again, and it's still intact. So thank you, Paul.
Or or maybe someone who just decided they didn't want snowmobiles going in their neighborhood.
No, this is to keep the snowmobiles away from the road, and he wanted, he was afraid that they might try to go through the pavilion. So he made this nice little path and lots of signs. They went to a lot of trouble.
Yep, Paul's very good at that. Um, we could always do the game cam trick again if needed, right? We've had different folks.
Yeah.
Use creative means to wander through the park.
Very effective.
Station the Jeep out there twelve hours a day. Only during the week.
He can get his little camera shot and have have to talk about.
Okay. Oh, sorry. David?
I, um, want to say that I that I did check with the the nearest neighbor and very convinced that she had no involvement in in this despite her other concerns regarding the park. And and again, echo Meredith's support, our recognition of the support that the that the representatives of the two snowmobile clubs did in in trying to make this something that works for for everybody.
Thanks, David. Year end encumbrances.
So you received a long list of encumbrances, and if you want to go through each one, we can, but either that or you can just ask questions or choose one. There is money in the budget for all these, though not necessarily in the line that we are targeting it to. But if one line number expended, we might over spend it, and in the case of, say, municipal resources contract services. There are a few instances where we don't have an actual vendor yet because of COVID, which we haven't been able to get votes and things like that. We're still working diligently to get these things done in case of the district crosswalk signs. I believe that project has to be done by June of twenty twenty two.
The only question I had was the money for the logo package for Eskomo Valley Parks and Recreation. I just want to make sure that it's Enfield Parks and Recreation.
But she's still working under that email umbrella because she still has a budget this year.
Yes.
But we will verify that it is Enfield and not regional since she she's well aware that.
No, it's, it was quoted as Enfield.
Thank you.
Basically, the I'm going to choose how where the state images that we've that have been floating around that look like they belong to us may or may not have been farrow and probably should not. I'm not saying this person was responsible, my, that they're inherited, but they're posted. Our website doesn't actually have them, but like Keenan has a logo for Moscow Parks and Recreation, and so Enfield doesn't necessarily have something that is Enfield. Interesting things you want. That's directed by it. Did you have a Home Depot stuff for the credit card?
Yes, that's for the storage. Yes, they're on here.
Okay, we put that in the storage. Instead of sending DPW out.
So I will need a motion to improve the encumbrances listed.
I will make that motion.
Second.
All in favor? The encumbrances.
Thank you for doing this, because I know end of year is always interesting.
Capital Improvement Program Fuel Management System Upgrade Proposals.
Jim probably wants to talk about this.
Jim?
Yes, back on here. Yeah, this is a a project that we had gotten approved at town meeting to replace the gas tank out front. But we haven't been able to get that project done due to a lot of factors. And then in the meantime, we've had the pump system which which delivers the fuel, but it also tracks the departmental fuel use. That has failed. It's a, it's a system that was purchased secondhand, I believe, from the from the the Concord Hospital, and we've been using it for a number of years. It is, it's a binary based DOS system, so it has all commands and colons and, you know, weird things. And so we've had it fail a couple of times, and we've been able to rebuild it. It takes about three hours to get everything back in. And we just, we tried that one more time, and that has not worked. So my proposal is to take the gas tank money, let the gas tank fly for another year and and use that money to replace the system so that we can, you know, adequately quickly deliver and sort of manage the use of the fuel. You know, at the departmental level. Right now, it's, we're doing it with a clipboard, and every time it rains, the clipboard's, the paper disintegrates on it. People don't know exactly, or forget to write it down. They don't know what vehicle they're in, et cetera, et cetera. This should automate a lot of that and would upload it to a a cloud site that that could be, you know, pulled in from anybody who's who's doing the transfers between apartments, departments. And so I I think the money is about the same for the pump system as the tanks. If it isn't, if it's a little low, we would probably use some of our new equipment money to maybe buy the the vehicle fobs or a a part of that.
So actually, this is an item that was a CIP Capital Reserve Fund item, so it's not necessarily budgeted, but it didn't get into the plan that CIP will get this year, so it kind of be in addition to that. It wasn't, it was on the approved plan for twenty twenty. It just didn't make make it forward for twenty twenty two.
Well, I think Jim's made a pretty powerful case for this.
I I think my, so my questions, Jim, would be, is because it's a hard wired system, is there a battery backup or is there a plan for a case, you know, it's sort of sometimes when we lose power or it's hard down for a little bit.
Yeah, this, this is, this is, yeah, this system, it's, it's, it will reuse the conduits that we currently have for the existing system. And then, of course, we have the generator that backs up the entire facility, so that 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 will work. But again, it will, it will need I I think it needs to see Wi-Fi, and we've tested it out there, and I I think it's going to be strong enough, but if not, the guy thought he could use one of the conduits to bring the thing back in, so it's, it gets into the building and can get to the Wi-Fi that way, so.
Better for not very much money, you can tap even air, airports that tap off the building to it.
Yeah. Exactly, yeah.
I'm in favor. The motion? I would make a motion that we accept the proposal for the car lock rule delivery system for DBW as presented. I guess it should be smart fill system of that.
Motion has been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Okay, Jim, you've got your new fuel system.
Thank you.
Our property tax abatement.
One is actually three different parcels that took for tax by taxi after the first bill's announced that that has to be abated to.
Can we approve them all at once?
How do we get a bedroom?
It's possible that they didn't, weren't able to get inside.
But then other room, some other room was counted. The layout.
It it could be this is a room that counts as a bedroom, but maybe it does have a closet, so I don't know that it counts as a bedroom.
Closet to be a bedroom, right?
I don't have a bedroom. I don't have.
There's no. I don't know how they, how they do that, but.
I mean, I'm not opposed to this, for seven dollars, I'm just like. Can we approve about this, please? I make a motion that we abate the properties listed. The three properties listed as the vote.
All in favor?
I'm sorry.
Three for the town and one for the.
Oh, one for the, and then, I'm sorry, but yes, four.
Four.
What happened to it on this count?
The motion of the the second still stands.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comments? I can't see the way you're sitting, I couldn't see your hand.
I just want to thank you for reaffirming the no snowmobiles on the Big Mal Brook property, and also that's something I've been following for a number of years now, and it's, yeah, it's been an ongoing issue with this one particular landlord. And yes, the easements, the conservation easement is silent on any off-road vehicles that's, it was just left to the property owner.
Yeah.
Type of, the land trust leaves that option to the property owner to decide if they want to specifically deny it or allow it or just leave it blank. And the town left it blank, but the state RSA is very clear, any off-road vehicle, ATV, snowmobiler, and there's probably a few other things that are classified as that, the Jeep might even know more by name. But that, the state law is very clear, landowner permission is required to use someone else's property to ride your ATV or snowmobile or four wheeler on their prop, on someone else's property. Best of my knowledge, this landowner has never requested or receives, might have requested, but he never, as I know, received permission from the town in writing, saying, yes, you may ride your snowmobile on our property.
We have all motorized vehicles prohibited from our concern with the exception of utilitarian a tractor going in to pull out logs, for instance.
Right, right, it's each deed is, each conservation easement is specific to the property and the landowner at the time of the signing. So at the time the town signed it, they left it open.
Yeah.
But you can always go back and add things to an easement, but taking something out of an easement is harder, as long as it's possible, but but the state law is very clear that if someone wants to ride his snowmobile there, they need permission from the property owner. And like I said, I've been following this issue for a number of years now, and best of my knowledge, he is the only person that rides his snowmobile there. The trail goes well his driveway to the Big Mal Brook property and then on home to other people's property. So it's a passable trail to get to somewhere else.
Well, I think the situation tonight has been cleared up and a problem hopefully will be eliminated. Are there any other public comments?
Yeah, I have one. I have a public question, rather.
Okay.
Didn't we not, at our last meeting in Board of Selectmen, have a discussion about reconsidering the mask ordinance or putting out some verbiage concerning a mask ordinance and some potential signage?
It may be time.
I believe the time is coming. I'm not saying we want to impose a mask ordinance necessarily, but I think we need to put well, I don't know. What do you guys think?
We have an email list, we have the lister, we have Facebook, and we could easily print and distribute signs that indicate there is a mass resolution to businesses again. Yeah, that's not a problem. I, in the long run, I see this as eventually the children, smallest children are going to be able to be vaccinated. At that time, we're going to need to decide what we drop our line of the sand. And that's probably safe February-ish, depending on what they have for success, but for now, it's going to stand.
David?
John, you are entirely correct in terms of where that was left at the last meeting. I don't, I mean, obviously, I feel quite strongly that that we've are have a a major surge. I don't, I mean, obviously, I feel quite strongly that that we've are have a a major surge coming at us sooner rather than later. And uh I I think you at least need to be clear about what metrics you will use to to increase notch up the the mitigation efforts.
I think the the term resolution at this point isn't strong enough. Doug went into a shop here in town on Saturday. It was crowded. No one was wearing a mask. He asked about masks and the clerk said, we're not required to wear them. So. He walked out and he went elsewhere to make his purchase. Sharon?
I um just wanted to say that I fully support all of the employees in Enfield and I think everybody does a fantastic job. I also support um the need to keep salaries competitive. I understand how hard it is to recruit employees and to train them. I, as a taxpayer who's retired on a currently fixed income even, and I'm sensitive to maybe our income might be better than many of the residents in Enfield who all are subject to varying economic situations with their own jobs and whether they have any pay raises whatsoever. So I'm not saying that there shouldn't be a pay raise, but I would just caution people when they say, well, that's only, you know, um $10.30 on a house. It's $350,000. Not everybody has a house. It's $350,000 in Enfield. I suggest that many are less than that. They would pay less, but they can afford to pay less. I also want you to consider that when I hear statements like that, what I have to do in my mind is to say, okay, $10 for employees a raise, that's great. What other things at town meeting are we going to pass in a budget that's going to add other dollars to my final tax base? And how will that affect my budget? And all of us are facing inflation. So I'm fully supportive but cautious about any future spending. And I know that you're going to want to propose something regarding the library and the municipal building, and that is going to be a huge cost that um we need. But I don't really know how many people are going to be able to afford that. And I don't want to see people leaving Enfield because they can't afford to live here. So just going forward, that's just a cautionary statement. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sharon.
I think what's important here, though, is that's $10 for the full year. So it's less than a dollar a month.
Could we we get back to the discussion that I was.
Sure, yeah, if we.
And then.
Absolutely.
Thank you. What I would like is is us to end tonight with some clear statement, whatever that statement is. I'd love to hear from the chief as to emergency management. This is an emergency, I imagine.
Sure. Uh, so I think that. I I I think that uh I remember reading the minutes from from the last meeting and I think there's some discussion about some signs, stuff like that. Because I think that there is a lot of confusion out in the public about where is Enfield at as far as is there a mass ordinance? Is there a mass resolution? What is a resolution? And I and I and I think I I think that um the resolution could be supported by putting up some signs around town, basically saying, hey, the uh I can't think of a better term right now, the governing body of Enfield, the the select board and the officials of Enfield are strongly encouraging and requesting that members of the public wear masks. I think that, to be quite frank, that, you know, if you go to coming up with a mask ordinance, I'm going to be quite honest, I don't know that it'll accomplish anything more than our resolution does. If you go to in over Lebanon who have mask ordinances right now and you just walk around, do your Christmas shopping, you'll see, and and I don't, I I couldn't give you a a great number off the top of my head. I want to say like 50/50. But, you know, it depends on where you go. Sometimes it's better, sometimes it's worse, just really depends on where you go in compliance. And uh so at that point, we create a mask ordinance, we create, really what we create is civil disobedience. People that are, when we pass it, they're not going to do it anyway. But I do think that there are is some confusion on people, right? You know, a clerk that says, well, we don't have to, they're they're right. They don't have to wear one. But I do think that, you know, Enfield could support our mask, you know, our resolution by putting something out publicly, both social media and through some signs saying, hey, look, you know, here in Enfield, yeah, we're not creating a town ordinance yet, but we need we need people to work with each other. Please wear a mask.
I think we could say required, right? Even though it's a resolution, couldn't we use the name word required? It's just that there's no teeth in terms of penalty. But I think if we were encouraging more voluntary compliance and saying, we're asking you to join us in doing this because the next step is we're going to give it, go back, give it an ordinance and do penalties. Like, I mean, that's the end of the day. If we have a real real trouble, we're headed back to an ordinance. And I don't think we have the people in power and I don't want to empower the the people who are never going to wear it to stand on their little soapbox either. I'm nervous about that because then the people on the borderline are like, ooh, they're being tyrants. And it it doesn't, we're in a no win situation, but Enfield, I'd say, because I've had to do a bit more shopping and things like that recently, our compliance here is tarnished compared to Lebanon and Hanover where I've been. And I don't go in some of the box stores where I'm like, oh, boy.
Well, I think that like uh what what Bert said was a great example, right? Someone went to the store, people weren't wearing masks, turn around a lot.
I take my.
You have to, you know, as an individual, obviously make a choice at some point too, you know.
But it can be a nuisance too, because it meant he had to go to tractor supply to get what he needed. Where everybody was wearing a mask, by the way.
Hanover has Hanover has a mask ordinance. Uh, I I went someplace in Hanover not too long ago and when I walked in, I was the only person in there wearing a mask. And it was very blatant from the owners of that business. We're not we're not following this. We're, look, you made your choice. Like they said, if you want to wear one, wear one. They had a box at the front. I'm looking around. I'm the only one wearing one. It's so. I think that I I I I should agree with you, John, that that that, you know, Enfield, you know, I think we are doing more than a lot on this. I mean, we could come out with a mask ordinance and then not enforce it because we just don't have the the personnel and or the the courts aren't supporting the the financial part of of that's really what gives you the teeth, right?
Right. And we're living in a state which which the the state government is not really supporting this process.
I know I think I think continuing to bring it up at these meetings, continue to and then maybe improving where we're already at as far as the town just reaffirming our position on it is, you know, I I hate to say this, is probably doing more than doing more than most, you know, you're going to get like Kate said, you're going to get the day sayers that, look, you know, Kanan has nothing, right? As far as a mask ordinance, Lebanon and Hanover have a full mask ordinance. We have a resolution where we strongly encourage or want to require you to wear masks. If you look numbers across the board, and I'm not talking like this week because they change. I send it to you guys every week, right? They change every week. This week, Kanan's below us. Two weeks ago, they're above us, you know. Hanover is below us right now. Three weeks ago, they're above us. Lebanon is way above us right now. So it's kind of one of those things that I can't do. I I'd love it if I could sit here and tell you that, hey, if we institute a mask ordinance tomorrow, Enfield's numbers are going to drop drastically. But I've been tracking the numbers now for a year and a half.
And I think another thing that would be fair to consider, and this is partially anecdotal, but if you look at the schools, they have full compliance and they have intra-classroom transmission, super low if not at all in most instances, right? So the kids are still getting COVID, but they're getting it from their outside activities, which we have no control over. Like, the likelihood that they grab it in the store is a lot lower than when all 20 kids pick piled at someone's house.
Yeah.
And we can't stop that regardless. And that's been going on right along. I think that's where the COVID has is passing more than anything.
Social events.
Yeah.
I think that what we can do more of too in Enfield, so Enfield, you know, we've been putting stuff out on our social media, stuff like that, but Enfield's hosted two vaccination clinics in the last three weeks. You know, Enfield, you know, we're one of the higher percentage vaccinated towns. Right. You know, and I think as a town.
Yeah.
I maybe our message even more is keep pushing that. I mean, we're one of the closest towns. We're almost 70%. Where it's 69.6, I think, of of the first shot, it was pushed 64 of the second.
Could we, as a public service, re remind, restate the resolution, say masks are required without telling them there is a requirement? Do that little blurb. Tell them, here is, you know, Vinnie, like I know off the top of my head, it's vinnie.nh.gov. But someone who decides they need a booster or whatever, they don't all know how to do it. So here's a resource here. Here's the DH COVID hotline number, right? And just throw them a few resources and then express as a leadership group that we strongly encourage people, the best way to stay healthy and protect your friends and neighbors in our community is to get vaccinated and get boosted and limit your social contact.
I like that statement.
Right. If you do that, it's a strong, it's a quick bullet point message.
Yeah, weekly if necessary.
I mean, and it 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 tells people what our expectations are without clubbing them with a stick. And then we'll let my kid run around and duck her head and be like, ew, for the rest of them because that's what she does to women stores.
The funny thing is the kids don't seem to mind wearing them at all. My granddaughter enjoys wearing a mask. She wears it in the house.
You can make faces at adults when you have your mask on.
I I guess what, yeah, I I think your uh example just worked spot on, you know? And if we could have some posters designed and my only concern is we want to use the word required. Well, I would say.
I bet you could require voluntary compliance.
Yeah. You can require anything you want. It doesn't mean someone's in it too.
You know, but I I just want to be clear. Very strongly recommended, very strongly recommended. The town wants to save your lives.
Well, you know, my kids are required would be then how do we explain that it's not required, but it's.
But you're required to go to school and kids get to go on vacation instead. I mean, that's how I see it. Like, I'm not saying it's a a good idea, but people ignore requirements all the time.
But they use the word required. Somebody made a plank to Roy direction.
You have to explain it's a resolution.
He's got no place to go with it and then that person's going to tell and they'll they'll probably.
Strongly or.
I think we keep.
They're going to do it either way.
I I I hate to say the word, but we keep putting that, I guess, keep putting that message out, right? Hey, the town of Enfield is, you know, you know, and we, but we, if this continues to go in, then we'll then we'll revisit. You know, and I said, the other thing, I think is a is a big thing is we keep using our resources as a town to keep putting information out there about the vaccination clinics and about, look, if somebody needs a ride, all of an officer come pick them up to take them to the vaccination clinic. Though I think they'll, I think they'll come to your house. You know, but I think that we can also on our end pick that up of putting that information out there, making sure that vaccinated. Look, I, this is a first off, I actually just got released from COVID quarantine yesterday. I have no idea where I where I got it from, but you know, I, you know, with COVID, I talked to the nurse. I had a headache and a sinus for two days. I talked to the nurse and when they called me halfway through it and they're like, what are your symptoms? I told them and they were like, they asked me, so you vaccinated? Yeah, of course I have. They said, thank you very much because because you're vaccinated, you're what you got was so minor. I would even have called it a head cold when I got prepared. They said, you know, the of the 400, of the 456 people that are hospitalized in Hampshire. My understanding of through my resources, two are only two are vaccinated.
Yeah, I've I've read that.
And they have other health issues.
Yeah.
That speaks volumes. Eighty eighty-four percent of the people that are getting positive for COVID are non-vaccinated. I'm in that 16% that got it, but look what happened. I had a.
Why don't we add a bullet point that is show your support for medical and emergency personnel?
Yeah, that's the best.
Because we we have a strong history of respecting our medical and emergency personnel and it's the community, it's the veteran community to the hospital and.
Yeah.
So say this is another way of showing your support is by doing these things so that we.
I heard today the latest figures that with the Moderna and they get, they didn't have statistics for Pfizer for the Moderna vaccination. You're only 40% protected after six months. So it's really important to get that booster shot. That brings you up to 75%.
Yeah, Pfizer's a little bit better, I understand. That's very true, that the booster, they're they're deciding is just brutal. Now, I'm wondering, is is it going to come a time when we need number four?
Yeah, I think it's going to be.
I think I'm not a doctor waiting, but I think you'll find how you get the flu shot every year.
Yeah.
I think that we'll probably, hopefully, we're not wearing these masks, but hope in another year, we'll probably be talking about.
Maybe it'll be a combination path.
So so I just want to be clear. I understand what the it is at the result of this. We're going to tee up a a a revisit of the message. We're going to send that message somewhere electronically. Are you suggesting we actually do things up that gets laminated or something and hand it out to what stores?
That's what we did last time.
I I think we should. I think we should.
I think I've been in, I wanted, I wanted to start today. I forget where it was, but I wanted to start today right on. It was outside of Enfield. So every every store I go into, I look and see what is, is this store required a mask or not required a mask? Anyway, I saw one and it said, and this was from the store, it said, this store strongly encourages all patrons to wear masks, right? And it was right there as they walked in. When we had our mask ordinance, you know, me and Phil actually delivered signs to every business in town, small, medium, large. And to a T, everybody put it, you know, most of them just sit there, put it wherever you want it. We put them up. We could do the same thing again. Make up another one that says, you know, the the town of Enfield and the Enfield select board strongly encourage all patrons to wear masks, you know, while indoors, whatever. First responders are medical, you know, people that live here and Enfield residents.
Well, Meredith.
Stores and couple of them up.
David has a comment.
Okay. I I I think encourage or strongly encourage is still a little bit too passive and I would suggest the word urge.
Urge. I I agree with urge.
Urge. That second, second, I think we should say so that we don't get caught up in the inside outside. Wear your, wear your mask, wear your mask indoors or inside all, you know, a- any indoor gatherings. That sort of thing ra- rather rather than than just wear a mask generally.
Okay.
I like my cow graphic, a cow's length away. You're not.
Kurt has a comment.
Well, what's currently on the books, if a store owner requires anybody to walk that walks in the door to wear a mask and someone refuses and puts up a, you know, argument to an argument, what is the recourse for the store owner?
Yeah.
So. They know it's criminal trespass.
Okay, okay.
I personally spoke with uh all the business owners and kind of let them know that the PD will continue to support whatever decision they make.
Okay.
They all know that they.
So they don't need a fallback line to.
Nope. Okay.
And I have a question regarding the policy that's currently in place where people are wearing masks in public meetings, public spaces for the town buildings.
Right.
On hallways, meeting rooms and that sort of thing, but we're not.
For social events.
Yeah. I don't think that's a problem because you're more than six feet apart.
We are. And I just want to be sure that that's that's okay.
Phil Phil just said where social distance or physical distancing cannot be, I'm not sure I heard it perfectly practiced or something to that effect. I think that makes sense.
I just want to be sensitive to the amount of words we put on it.
Yeah, well, yes.
I'm going to have a hard limit on the number of words.
Right.
I get the message.
Jack, do you you have a rough idea of what we're looking for? And you could send us something and we can and. I'm good at cutting words.
I'll send you, I'll send you an electronic red pen. Once you as a group approve it, we'll get it to work. Okay.
David, you have another comment?
Unfortunately. transmission is primarily small particle airborne and the, a little bit droplets. So if, if people are not wearing masks in, in a area that doesn't have modern HVAC ventilation and actually the, 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 the clear plastic guards may actually make things worse for transmission between employees and those in, in the office.
I think we have the air, the specific air. You know, that we purchased. And I do feel like limiting your pod of humans you interact with is also crucial. And so each of these offices to me is a pod. And don't, if you don't travel, it's a ton between pods. That's probably relatively, it's like saying, I mean, you guys are working at the end of the day. So.
We're, we're all vaccinated. At least most of us are boosted.
Like I don't go into your pod area without my mask on.
John has closed his notebook.
Can I springboard off of this to one more thing having to do with that? We, when we said the policy did not require them in the community building, I think that that should change.
I agree.
So is that going to be for everybody?
I think it's.
Yes.
It's a town home building.
Town home building, whatever goes on there.
I think, you know, we, I understand why people complain about few events they see. I truly do. And I think if we're sending a message right now, it would not hurt. I understand why we listed it before and it was fair, but it's a little different.
Yeah, and it's gotten out of hand.
Without a town, without it being a town function, there is no way that we can enforce that.
But it's our property and it's.
But I, I'm not attending everybody's.
No, I understand, but.
Check to make sure that.
I think we can.
All we can do is ask.
Yep. And they can be asked and there are repeat events and there are some.
And we can put sign on the door, mask required in this building.
Because that is our building. So to go back to the commentary on the taxes. I think, you know, if we're talking a $200,000 property and $6 total for the year. And I, I aimed for, I, I spoke about 350 because property values have gone up so much. I'm going to tell you right now, I have $130,000 property. So I'm going to be even luck because people make different choices about how they live and how they spend their money and that's their business. And certainly if you don't think you can spare $10, you definitely should vote that, right? Like that's, that is a choice. But I think we can't not have this discussion for our employees because we can be penny wise and town foolish. And in this case, if you sacrifice $10 in one place, you may be spending another $7,000 in training. Turnover is very expensive. And so for me.
I think what Sharon was saying, though, if it, it isn't just $10 for everybody.
No, no, because some people live in million dollar lake houses and we don't all get to live there. So for that, that is a lot more money. But I think if you can afford to live that more lavish lifestyle, then you can probably afford the $10.
And I, I think also one of the things that happens is people feel, oh, this item is something I can have a voice in and there's some big ticket item, people feel there's nothing really we can do about that. So the question is, I guess, Jack, you know, how one initiates the budget committee revisiting this?
The motion for reconsideration.
Yeah.
From the moving party, the winning party. So somebody that voted in favor of the 10% would make a motion for reconsideration.
Which I did very channelly, thoughtfully.
And I don't criticize anyone for their yes go, because I think you, you do need to say yes to that because that's one of those who say, no, you look like you don't. It's not a great spot.
Right?
Yeah.
Although I would prefer that as a member of the budget committee who did that, but I think we'll. But you know, they, they might feel that the select board is leaning on them.
So we'll leave it in your lap, John. Okay.
Well, we'll, we'll leave it in, in the chairman, budget committee chairs.
Right.
Right.
We'll have a conversation about how to bring that up.
And I, and I tried to attend the meeting and asked it to be on the agenda.
Yeah.
Quite honestly, John, I'm going to ask for the board. And obviously if you voted on the board, but hopefully, you know, many members of the board that were there will at least be considered to reconsider it in an open, public conversation where they can reconsider that. If they come to the same conclusion, then we can deal with that after. But I think at that point, we'll at least have, I think there was 18 members of, 18 town employees that were there that didn't get to participate in the open conversation to include three department heads. But I think at, at that point, when we can have an open discussion, you know, a public, in public discussion where department heads can have, can put some input to answer some questions that maybe some of the people have. What is the, what is the, not just financially, right? What impact to our employees does this have? But also, hey, what, what is the rest of our neighboring, and I'm not talking about just Lebanon, right? Because I know Lebanon has a bigger tax base than Hanover does, but Canaan and Sunape and the other places, what are they doing? But also, you know, giving the employees the least opportunity to listen to that discussion, to why was this decision made? And if they come to the same conclusion, at least we have had an open conversation that, that, a public conversation that maybe satisfied, or maybe we convinced them as, as a group that, you know, 4% is, is where we need to be at. You know, that that vote happens. But I think I, I myself at least plan on being at that meeting and prior to requesting to be on the agenda to ask for a reconsideration.
And as a process improvement point, and this is not just for budget committee, this would be for us as well. It's hard as somebody who hasn't been involved in this process, when you attend the meeting, to know that you should stay for after non-public. So maybe we could help the public by saying, this is a portion where we're going to go into non-public. This is why in plain English. But we will be coming back and we will restate our findings to the extent we are able afterwards. Please feel free to stay, right? And be welcoming about it and do a little bit of education around it. So we help people be more informed about their attendance.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.